Welcome to the Wednesday, November 20th Work Session Meeting of the Penfield Town Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Barry?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Leenhaus?
Here.
Ackenden?
Here.
Taglish?
Here.
Before you begin this evening, we have some very special guests with us from Girl Scout Troop 63340. And they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So can you please do that for us? That was awesome. Thank you. That's like the best pledge we've had all year, I think.
That is.
No offense to any Boy Scouts that have been here. Just saying. So we'll let Troop 63340 exit. Thanks for coming, everybody. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I think we have the October 16 minutes to approve. Is there any discussion?
No discussion, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Vote, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Leenhaus?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I'll ask Andy. Oh, there you are. And Tim. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So at the legislative meeting, we presented some of the parts of the plan. I know it was being looked at a little bit more to gather some more information and thoughts. We've also posted that previous plan on the town's website and did receive kind of some suggestions. So all in all, we'll run through the presentation. If you have questions or comments throughout, just let us know. So again, some of the slides are similar or the same since the last one, but still wanted to highlight just our Master Plan Update Committee. And then we broke our, pretty much, the master plan down to four different dimensions. Now, we've got indoor facilities, which was our recreation facility, PenRec study. This was discussed at the last meeting. This was kind of a big overhaul of that dimension where in the past, it was really just some wording saying, you know, we should look into a community center or a rec center. And for the town board's approval, we actually had Plan Architectural Studio with Chris and Cortland come in, do some information, some gathering from the community at our input sessions to create some concept plans. So just took some pictures of the site plan. Again, this was at Veterans Memorial Park, that it was at least decided to look at. There are other options for town-owned property and things like that, but it was chosen for Veterans Memorial Park, just for the concept part of the plan. And here's just the basic concept plan for the first floor and the second floor of that new rec center. Now, the pieces that we added since last meeting was each dimension will have the majority, if not all, of the recommendations, just kind of summarized into what each dimension. So for this one, we really said the town of Penfield should continue the process of pursuing a new recreation facility. Again, because this is a five-year plan, it is recommended that the town should have a new facility in the next three to five years. Similar language to previous master plans. The location of a new facility, we best suited using currently owned property. Again, Veterans Memorial was kind of the chosen site when we discussed it as a committee, had a lot of utilities already currently there that would save some costs. Some other benefits would be close to Town Hall, close to DPW, amphitheater, just a bunch of different park amenities at Veterans Memorial Park, but there are other options to be looked at. So this was in reference to our current community center. As the way it's currently designed, no longer provides the community with a facility that meets the needs of the entirety of the community. We continue to expand, and again, I said it last time, I think our rec staff does an amazing job of trying to program as much as possible in our current facility and utilize exterior facilities and partnerships to offer as many programs as possible, but there's always that need of what can we do more? What programs can we offer? And typically, we are turning away, you know, instructors that are trying to run new programs just based on not having the facility. Currently working with the school district, even them, we relied on them for years and years and years for programming and things like that. They're not able to meet the needs, really, for the rec department and community groups when it's gym space, classroom space. So I think it's just a larger need for all programming, for facility space. And then based on the responses from the master plan, community input survey, some of the amenities that are not described in that concept plan would be, you know, some gymnasium space, indoor walking track, gathering spaces, senior center space, excuse me, that is in the plan. This was the part where the other amenities that aren't included in the plan would be something like an indoor turf field, possible indoor pool, as we currently have, a community pool located at the high school, a fitness weight room, and dedicated childcare after-school space. And I think the indoor turf field is the one that we've heard for years and years and years and really came out in the input survey as something that not a lot of towns have, something that I believe last time with, you know, different groups that were here, like the Boy Scouts, you know, obviously the sports groups, the robotics teams like that, just general indoor space that could be utilized throughout the year. So that was it for the rec center study. And then we're moving on to dimension two that I'll turn to our Parks forum in.
Yeah. So a lot of the, it's a lot of the same stuff that was in it before, just a rundown of the parks, properties, amenities, updates. We just also, we always take the inventory of the parks, properties, and trails updates for whenever we add something new to these park systems, like Shadow Pines property. We're continuing to follow the Land Use Advisory Committee report on that. The Arundaco Bridge Creek project, I know we're hopefully gonna get some answers on it tonight, hopefully, because we had the bid opening a couple weeks ago for that. And then the biggest part that we added to the, this dimension was the connectivity to parks and locations. Just throughout multi-use trails, that kind of thing, all throughout the town, trying to connect different parks to different other areas of town. And the big one that we're currently working on is the south side of the Shadow Pines with, through further trail services.
And that's a project that hasn't been presented to the board yet, but it's certainly been approved for a consultant for further trail services to come in. So we're even hoping in the next couple months, you know, working with further trail services, that we could provide a presentation or something to the board.
For the parks and some of those, the inventory in that section of the report, there's some overlap, right? With some of the presentations you did, I think in the last two, three months of, for maintenance and putting it into a calendar, and so there's no conflict between those two, I'm assuming, though?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. No conflict. And then, just moving forward, obviously, our main goals are to evaluate the feasibility and retrofitting of existing athletic fields. We were talking about it today. These sports groups are growing. We need to adapt to the growing demands of the kids and the young adults playing these sports and using our fields. And then evaluate opportunities to create visually planning, parks, amenities, entrances. Again, that's through Boy Scout projects, that's through parks projects, as far as like kiosks. A couple recommendations that were added in, like my example would be Dayton's Corners. We've had some feedback. They would want a park sign by that south parking lot at Dayton's Corner, Dayton Corner School, basically recognizing that it is a town park. That kind of thing. And then just something that we kind of, we've been talking about a lot recently is existing play equipment should be upgraded to enhance accessibility for the disabled, including accessible swings, accessible soft surface, transfer decks, and more play events on level grounds. That is a concept that we've been taking to heart over the last five, seven years, that type of deal. So whenever a new playground comes up for replacement, that is ideally what we are shooting for in the future. Even if it's not in the plan, that's just a presence that we try to feel throughout the town. And then, again, this was in the last time, as land becomes available, the town should look to acquire properties to provide green space for recreational areas, nature space, and to help with the connectivity of trails around town. The Trails Committee is a great group, they're active, and they'll continue to look at opportunities to expand their trail systems and what we have already for our properties. And then the last one is increased trail accessibility for biking in town parks and properties. That's been a, out of all the surveys and everything that we've gotten, that is a big one that we always constantly hear is more accessibility for biking. And hopefully, with our further, through further services, that can, they can identify certain areas for that.
Yeah, currently, a lot of our trail systems at our different parks are, you know, start at one position, do a full lap, whether it's a circle or some sort of a design, and then get back to that spot. Where I think, you know, the Trails Committee, like Tim said, you know, we've really discussed in the last couple of years, how do we make it connect to different neighborhoods, to different parks, to different businesses, things like that. So that connectivity piece is huge. And working with further trail services, having a professional consultant come in and kind of give us ideas and thoughts on how to do that on a property like the south side of Shadow Pines, that, you know, the paths are already there, but those were built for a golf course. So to actually have a trail, you know, engineer come in and look at kind of designing it, I think is just even a learning and educational piece for Parks and Rec moving forward. So we're excited for that to come up.
Yeah, and other than the updated stuff for the, for the parks end of things, the big add-on is the connectivity that Don Hoiler worked huge on. We all read it through in the, with the Parks and Rec Committee, Master Plan Committee, and that's a very important part. And I know it's a long wordy read in the actual report, but a lot of great information in there on connectivity, not just within the parks to make it more exciting, but all around town, to get from our office to, say, Town Hall.
Yeah, I love it. I always think I'd, and it's a little self-serving because I live in the area, but Baytown to, like the YN 250, if I can get there by bike, walk, it would be great. And that's probably true with the southwest corner of Penfield to go, you know, northeast, same thing. Yeah, I love it.
Yeah, and even, I know that the Trails Committee is already doing pop-up hikes to kind of explore some of those where, hey, I know a recent one was, you know, you get dropped off at Ellison Park, and then you make your way up to, all the way up to Arundaco Bay. So there's those new ideas of how do we get from this point to this point? And then hopefully, that will roll into new trail systems and connectivity just throughout the town of Penfield.
Yeah, great. Good.
So dimension three is Penfield people. Really just the update, the population trends. A lot of this information came from the most recent census for just demographics. And then there are varieties of needs, support, and assistance. You know, those were specific questions that we asked in the community input survey, and always a good idea to get feedback from the community for stuff like that. Some of the recommendations for that are, again, based off that community input survey, that the rec department should continually program towards the youth and senior participants. Enrollments continue to increase. We have a wonderful, really, variety of youth programs that happen all the time. And then I can't, you know, talk highly enough about our daytime education at Recreation Program. I think it's one of the gems here in Recreation for the town of Penfield. That really just is a wonderful program that offers lectures, and it's all volunteer-based, so the rec staff does a great job programming for that, and we've seen tons of extra enrollment for that. Some other recommendations are obviously when the, while the population continues to rise, there needs to be more programming and classes to help support and serve the growing community, and that ties directly into facility space and things like that. And then we touched on some of our community input questions on, I think it's a daily question at the rec department, and I'm sure other businesses in the town of Penfield, how do we connect what we do with the community? And it's really just continuing to promote and use technologies like social media. We do posters, flyers, websites, stuff like that. So always just trying to enhance the reach out there to get the information to people. So on to our Penfield Recreation Programs, which is dimension four, just general program data update. We used 2023 for the whole year, just for all the program data to kind of capture where we are. And then we use the community input for kind of just ideas from the community of what program they would like. And then these are just all the different ages and abilities and categories that we offer currently, and there's so much more. And some of the recommendations are, continue to offer varied programs and services for all age groups. Some of the top three Community Input Survey interests of areas were canoeing, kayaking, paddle boarding, hiking, and health and wellness. So again, just kind of helps steer the rec department, our Trails Committee to start, you know, doing more programming for things like that. I'm sure if you saw our community input, I think there was like 4D-ish different areas of interest, so a wide variety that people could let us know, but that was really just the top three, but there's so much more that we could look to program. And then one of the age groups that we continue to kind of struggle with, some of it's just based on how we take enrollments and capture sort of the programming, is for teen activities. Being in close proximity to the high school, we do get a lot of people that, you know, teens that come over after for programs, so we've tried to have more kind of open basketball, open pickleball, those sort of programs where it's more drop-in based. And also having the library in the same building kind of assists with that to draw kind of that age group. But we're always looking for more programs and opportunities for that kind of age group. And then the last one, something that we always do is just, you know, again, that inclusivity and adaptations for all of our programs. So when we do, sorry, that's not necessarily directly put into the report, but I did want to mention it here, that that's just always a part of the Recreation Department and staff. I know that was mentioned at the last one. If that's something where we want the wording put in there, by all means, we could for the recommendation, but, you know, we kind of did discuss it as a committee, and it's something that we naturally do, but we could identify it in our master plan if the need was there, or the want. So then I had this slide, and the last one, just wanted to put it out there, all the different ways that people can connect to Penfield Recreation. Just because the master plan's out there doesn't mean that we're not always constantly looking for feedback and input. So we've got our phone, our email. We've expanded our recreation hours to have evening and weekend staff in the last year and a half, and been able to program more kind of open programs that those people can oversee. We have our 2025 shelters coming up on December 4th at 10:00 AM for Penfield residents, so I wanted to mention that. And I'll also have our winter, spring 2025 program brochure that should hit mailboxes right around Thanksgiving.
So how are you going to bring a lot of these recommendations for work sessions and to make sure it's at least budgeted for, some of it might be for 2025, but we, you know, without the formal recommendations, it's not going to be earmarked for the 2025 budget, but there's probably some wiggle room in rec department funding and parks. But at least is there some idea of a cadence of how you would bring these recommendations for inclusion in the budgets 2026 and beyond?
Yeah.
Yeah, so normally, not normally, what we've done in the past is like, one example that I have is LaSalle's Landing Park. We want, they want, we've had recommendations about updating and improving the kayak launch and installing a birdwatching platform. So that's something, obviously, it's been identified here. The next budget session, we are normal. I would go to the director, Bob, and ask, say like, hey, this is what we're thinking about. Can we put it in the budget for this year? And then we go through the budget process for 2026. And again, same thing with the signs, it's just trying to pick away at the stuff.
Right, and I think so, again, like 2025, we didn't have the recommendations at least formally adopted, right? And so it can't, it couldn't be incorporated for...
Well, a lot of, I mean, one of the recommendations from the past master plan was the bridge down at linear, or Channing Field Park, I'm sorry, I apologize. So that's something that we did plan ahead for this budget, like this budget season, this past one, so.
My point is, there are a lot of great recommendations in here, and I think all of us feel like it's a huge undertaking, and to come up with a five-year plan already and like the length of time from the committee and energy and thoughts and involvement with the community survey, there's a lot of things that go into it, and so it's a fantastic job. And like I said, you know, last two weeks, like the whole, kind of to summarize it in this different fashion was, again, to very highlight the recommendations so that the board can consider it and then find a way to fund it, right? And so I don't want to lose a year for 2026 budget. I'm just asking, like, is there at least some idea of how the, some of the ideas or recommendations can at least be brought to a work session in, you know, first quarter so that we can try to find a way to get working on them?
Yeah, I know, I know some of the big-ticket things, you know, specifically like our rec center, you know, the kind of the thought behind was what this was, was it's been something that's been working for years and years and years. So kind of doing the rec center study, the full study has been presented to the town, myself, town engineer, and to the town supervisor, so we have that data. We, the committee chose not to put a lot of those finer details into the report, just because with it being a five-year plan, we all know construction costs and all those things could change. But we do have that ready, and, you know, maybe we could meet, you know, offline, or, you know, I could work with the supervisor or other people to talk about a timeline for that. But honestly, you know, that's, it's a recommendation, and we're hopeful, we know that there's capital improvement projects and there's planning for that. But really, we look this as a great opportunity to, you know, take some steps forward, so we're not just starting from ground zero when we're looking at a project like this. But there are still a lot of things like a turf field, other components that could be added in. This isn't just, you know, a concrete, this is what it's going to be, but this is more from the concept. So I'm all open to have those conversations, and we know it's not going to be, you know, a year, two-year sort of thing, but it does require planning as soon as possible.
Yes, I mean, for something, for the rec facility or something large like that, but I mean, you'll see, one of the items tonight is the remainder of the senior and youth ARPA funding. So it's more to encourage you both, once we adopt this, to bring it up sooner rather than later, so that we can, 2025, it's not going to be, you know, not a fruitful year, right? We want to be able to help support it, so.
Yeah, and I think the ARPA funds, you know, that wasn't anything we could have planned for.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
I think those opportunities come up, and I know we just talked about it before, too, grants, when they come up, you know, by all means, we'll, we'll look to continue to get as many of those as possible to increase programming.
Yeah, agreed. And I think the rec center is something, you're right, we've been talking about for years, residents talk about it all the time, and in the survey, that was a popular item. So knowing how fast time goes, I'd like us all to think about that of how do we make it happen? We know it won't happen overnight, it won't even happen in two, three years, but we've got to start taking steps to make it happen. We continue to grow, we know that, Penfield continues to grow, and the rec center would be, I believe, a very good thing for Penfield to have, along with our growth. And how we get started, how we start planning, I don't want to wait too long, but I think it's at least worth looking into, researching.
Yeah, I'll just say, you both said it, I'll say it a different way. I was just thinking, you just don't want to get, all the work that you've done to get stale, so we got to keep working on it, so we don't waste the time you spent a year or two ago and all the work that's been done. So absolutely. The only other quick question I had, and I, and I think I know the answer, but you, you're communicating with Penfield Schools, I know, I believe you are, Tim, and just so, just in terms of what they're doing with fields, I know that's, is that...
So we, especially spring through fall, you know, you know, we have Little League behind us as a major communicator, but really all of our sports groups, and we look at, you know, the partnership with the school and the town assisting them. So can the town handle the fields and the needs of them? But we work directly with the school to make sure that, really on a daily basis, the needs are met for those sort of groups. But we have discussions all the time about future projects for them. You know, we've talked about the rec center, I think that's one of the parts that came from the turf field and things like that, where we're hearing from sports groups, we communicate with the school district, obviously the pools in there as well, and they're directly related to that. Pickleball projects, mountain biking, shared use trails, all of those things are kind of intertwined to connect schools as well, not just parks.
Great.
When it comes to the rec center, I think that it's time to start doing some timeline underpinnings to really start moving toward it actually happening and tying it into budgeting and that kind of thing. I think that's the bottom line of what we're saying.
Great. I think I said it at the last one, I feel like Recreation, there's other departments too, we're always looking to do more work, so this is fun, great stuff to explore and to discuss, so we're excited.
Okay. Anything else?
Just saying, they're not, they're not going to disagree with what you said.
I can't speak for Tim, but at least the rec department, yes.
No, having a chance to take a little deeper dive into it since the last meeting, it's a great document, and I'd like to at least recognize the committee as well. I'm probably putting you on the spot here to fire off names if it's...
Just go back to the first slide.
You go back and, I'd like to just...
Maybe we can do a test, and I can try it now.
I just want to acknowledge them and everybody who's, you know...
And again, it's not that it's, it's a living document where, if we get input, you know, next year, this, even this year, not that we'll add it in, but obviously, it's in our, it's on our to-do list, it's on our, you know, idea pages, if something comes up, hey, it's a good idea, we can move forward with, trying to get funding and stuff.
And one of the things that is newer in this kind of timeframe when we're doing the master plan is, is the restart of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee as well. So we do kind of have another layer of great input and discussions for a lot of these projects. I know the Shadow Pines multi-use has already been kind of discussed there, and just a great way, again, to get more community input. So we want to thank all of them as well.
Nice.
And in that case, I'd like to bring a motion for a resolution to be prepared for the adoption of the Parks and Rec Master Plan.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leenhaus?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Next item, Jimmy. This is the overview of the existing security system infrastructure and the future needs.
Changing of the guard?
Leave it in better hands.
Thank you, great job.
All right, Jim.
Hi, how are you all?
Great, how are you?
Good. So tonight, we're here to talk about the, give you a overview of our security system as far as cameras go. I had a presentation put together for you to look at, and I'd like to follow that, follow that presentation and...
I was going to have the table open, if that's okay?
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Sure, sure, yeah. And then...
Sort of a snapshot, that's...
I, I think you've all seen this, maybe not, I'm not sure. We put a table together for kind of an overview of what we have on, for our system, and our existing system, and then possible future sites. So I'd like to go...
I'm sorry, was that part of the packet?
It was, it was included in the link that was...
So I kind of like to go over that existing security cameras with you, just so that you understand what we have now, and then maybe what we're looking at in the future. But currently, we have 66 cameras throughout the town that provide a minimum of 30 days retention time, and some of them up to 90 days. And obviously, because, you know, we're growing continuously, and the surveillance camera systems are becoming more important... you know, we're growing continuously, and the surveillance camera systems are becoming more important for security reasons, you know, property asset protections, we're proposing to, you know, add some, add some more cameras over the next year, you know, if, if the funding's available. And I know that we've received some, you know, funding for 2025, so I'd like to start moving forward with a possible committee or some sort of plan that we can put together to present to you, to show you where we're going with it. So I guess at that, I'd like to ask if you have any questions. I know you haven't had much time to look at it, but.
So I think, for this was part of my ask a couple months ago, to kind of inventory the, and to get a recommendation of what it would cost, right, so we can figure out if it was some ARPA funding or, or other type of funding that we can allocate. But Jim, I couldn't tell quite from the materials in the drop, just to make sure, at least was security involved as part of this discussion for some of the recommendations that you made in the PowerPoint?
Security's been involved with some of the security camera systems, yes.
But as a part of the discussion for the recommendations you're making tonight?
Not, not really, no.
Okay, sorry, I would have just assumed since it's security.
To be clear, I asked Jim to provide a collection of the data about the security system itself, of what we had, not to, he wasn't asked to identify recommendations yet, so I think the presentation was.
So, okay.
Do we bring the presentation up?
No, I had the presentation up, I mean, we can bring it up for, for the, the board and the public. I guess I'm honing in on slide six, so it says cost estimate, and I read the provide and install equipment, I read these as recommendations, are these not recommendations by facilities and?
Well, no, that, so that, that slide right there is kind of a cost, it's a cost estimate of what cameras are, how much it's going to cost to add some cameras, so it's, it's a snapshot of what it costs to add a camera system.
Okay, so I, I guess, so it's, it's always helpful to talk things out, right, because when we see things in the drop, and especially when it's sparse like this, it's not always easy to tell. So, so I understand that the, the bottom cost is for the above, but I guess I want some assurance that these recommend, like, as an example, installing one camera in the secure storage of the sewer operations building completely makes sense to me, sounds reasonable, but is that a recommendation by both facilities and security, right? Like, do we need to protect that? I, I, I understand that there's some, I understand there's a logic to protecting sewer, but like, is that spot, if I, if, if I as a board member say, yep, total $15,000, go ahead.
Sure.
Is that one of the five most critical needs of a camera in the town of Penfield? I just want to make sure that all of the departments are communicating for what is the highest identified priority when you're coming to ask for funding.
Yeah, well, so that slide right there is a recommendation from our vendor that we use, and our vendor is obviously more knowledgeable than we are about locations of, you know, throughout, throughout the community and throughout the facilities, that they, it's, it's kind of, it would be normal to have a security camera in a location such as that, that, what am I looking for there? Storage area of the Sewer Operations Center, because there is so many products stored there. In other words, that's where all of our toilet paper is kept, that's where all of our cleaning supplies are kept, that's where all of our electrical supplies are kept, and so they recommended that we have a surveillance camera in there.
Well, I'm, I'm going to just interrupt, because during the request, you mentioned that the vendor provides you with, as part of like a request, an analysis of a particular location, and will recommend
Sure.
where cameras are best suited, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I, yeah, I was just going to say, I've talked to Steve generally about it, it's, this will be part of an overall security, I think, conversation we're going to have in general. And maybe you touched on this, but I've talked to Steve, like, around the, the court rec building, there's some areas that are not cambered now, is that?
That's correct, so not, there, we, we really have, besides Harris Whalen, Lower Lodge, we really don't have any, a 360-degree view of all of our facilities. So the answer to that is no, the, the recreation building does not have 360-degree view of the whole building. Around the court, we do, and that was done in 2020, that was just done at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And part of that possible future sites is the remaining exterior of the community center. Yes, we, we, we will take direction from our vendor and from maybe a committee input as to where would be the best place to, to install them, but it's not really rocket science of where these cameras got to be put. We know based on whether it be graffiti problems that we have, you know, town property that gets destroyed, or even if it's within our facilities, you know, such as people that deal with cash or have to take payments, should there be cameras on that, you know? So there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to, to, to a security system, including, you know, outside vendors or outside organizations being able to view our cameras at any time that they, they would need to. And I think that's something that the board has to decide on, you have to decide on that, it's not my decision, that would be a decision that's made through you, and then there would have to be policies that would have to be written for that. So it's, it's a lot of moving pieces when it comes to cameras, and I think over the next year, I'd like to try and hash out which way we're going to go with it.
I think, I think the underlying sentiment here is to try to get as much varied input as you can.
Yeah.
And, you know, certainly with security giving us reports and sending us pictures of the graffiti occurring at Philbrick and, and Shadow Pines and different places like that, that of course, you know, security would be involved in the placement of the cameras, along with the vendor, along with facilities, to get, get the most holistic approach to making sure that things are in the proper places, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I was just going to add that, sorry, and I've talked to Steve about this, it's, and I think you're referring to the effusus of, if I'm saying it, which is the sheriff's department system where they could access our cameras, obviously, the need would probably be town hall, rec, certainly courts, where if there was an active situation, the sheriffs could tap into it, kind of like the Ring Doorbell, I believe, you can give them access. But it's, so it's part of a bigger conversation, I think, on security in general, but.
And I apologize, I did not read this before the meeting, so I'm sorry for that. I think my expectation was, we were looking at the ARPA funds, and that we got some on the table still, and how much of that could give us the security that we're hoping to have. So we have the cameras, we have the integrated network, where security or anybody could look and access and see something going on, the license plate readers, and it's a lot, I agree with you, there is a lot to go in there, into it, and I also agree that we didn't think about what our input needs to be, like, okay, is it the town hall, or is it our parks that's most important? But trying to determine in a very short amount of time, how much of those remaining ARPA funds could really improve the security we have, specifically at our parks and other locations. And that, maybe that's a, you know, your, the company you're working with that would be a consultant to come in and say, okay, here's what you can do, you know, you go into a dealer, what can I do with this amount of money, and get it, but I do understand that's, that determination is complex. Go ahead.
So I, who is the vendor that we're working with?
Technical Systems Group.
Okay. So I, like Jeff, this is kind of where I'm, I'm thinking and for the board, right? Like, I'm looking at these of where the vendor thinks that we need cameras, and this is just me, maybe it's helpful at a work session to show the recent graffiti at Shadow Pines, so that the public is aware that this is a brand-new facility or brand-new offering for the residents, costs us a ton of money, and we've already gotten graffiti on it, which is just heartbreaking, and we've had a lot of graffiti issues at Harris Whalen Park, and on structures there, I mean, it's, it's just frustrating for me, and so that's kind of why I wanted to see, how much will it cost to get a camera fixed at Shadow Pines? It hasn't even been three months yet, and we are dealing with maintenance cost for this problem. So that's what the ask was, how much will it cost to get a camera up there that's going to be outfitted with wireless capability, because we can't pay overtime constantly for security to man it 24 hours a day, it's just not feasible, it's not smart, it's not human. And so tell me, how much is it going to cost to get a camera up there, so that if they can see it on their wireless device, and they're at four corners, and they see a group of whoever, they can get there in a flash, how much is that going to cost? So these recommendations for me aren't that helpful, I will just say, because it's not at the incidence where we've already had documented crime reports, right, and the criminal mischief, that's currently at a fourth degree, but it can get up to a felony degree, and I just don't want to pull money from our budget for that, if we can kind of curb it. I am sure sewer operations building is also important, but if it's going to protect toilet paper, I don't really care if it's like $5,000 of toilet paper, guys, like, let's protect real assets, and like during COVID, super important, right, but we're not there right now, I don't care about toilet paper, I'm sorry, we can find money for that elsewhere. I want to protect real things, town hall, our staff, unfortunately, we live in a day where shooter activity is, we need to protect our staff. I don't see town hall building here anywhere, Jeff, right? Like, I, I think, right, our staff are important too, we have FOB access on the doors, but if there is a real situation, we need police here ASAP, right, and we need it for protective purposes, I don't see it at the courts, so that's why I asked the vendor, like.
I guess I don't understand, what, what don't you see here? There's eight cameras here on the inside and four on the outside.
Where does, I am on slide six, it says.
Oh, I'm looking at the.
There's monitors in every room that, that does the front entrances and the hall.
Yes, but they're not all connected, right?
What do you mean by that?
So, let me just ask, so, so you as, as maintaining, maintaining facilities, do you have access on a town-issued device that you can pull up electronically, camera systems, to see all of the facilities you maintain at one time in real time?
If I'm at the town facility, I can.
In the town facility, but while, if you're at.
If I'm driving around in my car, no.
Say, you can only be in one place at one time, right, Jim? So if you're sitting here in town hall, can you see what's happening at Dolomite Lodge now?
Dolomite Lodge does not have cameras, but I could see what's happening at Harris Whalen Lodge right now, from here.
Okay, so I, I think it would be fantastic if our facilities director had that.
We have, we have that, that's what I'm saying, Candace, you're.
No, but, but you just said you don't have one at Dolomite Lodge.
Dolomite Lodge does not have cameras at it, you're correct, Harris Whalen Lodge does.
I, I think the long-term goal is that we have cameras virtually on everything, and that we can see it, see it all. I think that's the long-term goal that we're working.
I, I agree, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I, that's our goal.
The cameras are connected, so if somebody is, if somebody is at a computer and can log into the system, they can see the live feed from the cameras, that's correct, right?
That is correct.
But only where we have them, right?
Only where we have cameras, correct, and we can't see.
And there are many places currently where we have the crime incidents, right, the documented ones that don't have cameras, so what am I missing?
You know, no, I think the, the question was, at the, at the, I think the, the question Jim was answering was, could I see the camera sites we currently have? And his answer was yes, you're saying we have more camera needs than are currently covered.
Than more than currently covered, and if you weren't, if, and can you, do you have real-time access on a device if you had to see it?
On a mobile device, or on a computer, does?
Mobile device or a computer.
So could, those cameras, when they come online, can be added, and that would be accessible?
Okay, and, and is, and is that cost for both implementation and maintenance reflected here?
I think if you look at the future sites. Well, that was looking at one site in particular, that slide, so then this table summarizes the installation cost per location, and then annual maintenance cost, so that if you wanted.
This is per location?
So if you want to just, and I, I'll.
Wait, hold on.
I can hide. So we, I'll, so it's the community center, and then it would have told you in the other column, how many, how many cameras are needed, and that's the installation cost estimate, again, it's an estimate, just based on the, Jim's experience with past project sites, similar in camera count, does that make sense?
Yep, no, I, so I, I see your second sheet for possible future sites, so it's not in, reflected in the PowerPoint, which is where I was, so, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so this sounds more, the total for the additional cameras installation is 225,000, oh, I'm sorry, you pulled it up, I'm scared, I'm sorry. Thank you, Karen.
So, so I just want to point out, Shadow Pines properties on that list, however, there isn't an installation cost associated, and that's to be determined, and that's because that park is brand-new.
Yeah.
And so there is no infrastructure in that park, so we need to, and I know you said, well, wireless cameras, well, we don't use wireless cameras in, in this type of environment, and there's reasons for that, and so that Shadow Pines property needs an infrastructure put in, meaning an internet connection, otherwise, we're kind of just spinning our wheels trying to put cameras over there that we can't view from other locations. So it's kind of to be determined as to what it's going to cost at Shadow Pines. And some of the other properties, like Rothest Park does not have an infrastructure either. Can you buy wireless cameras? Yes, you can, they're based, they communicate through cell towers. Is it the most efficient way to do it? Probably not. That's why we kind of try and stay with wired cameras, they're more dependable. And Shadow Pines is definitely a spot that's going to need cameras, and.
Oh, yeah, totally.
And, you know, with the Clark House going up here over the next couple of years, I think that's going to be our opportunity to put the infrastructure in throughout the whole park. So I kind of held back on giving any kind of cost on that because of that reason. So, sorry if there was a misunderstanding.
No, 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 it's, it's.
It's a very, it's, it's not just, you know, let's put cameras here, and let's put cameras there, and go, and go with it, it's a.
I guess that's something that we can ask the security department to do, is like, bring up reports from like two years ago to present, to see which park has the most activity, and then we can prioritize where we can go from there, and then like get cost estimate from there. I think that's something we can start with, that's an easy ask, I think, and then going to the company also to overlay that, to see if it's feasible or not.
I just.
Just an idea.
Yeah, no, and I'll, I'll just add this, and I've talked to Steve about this, it's, you know, I, and it's, again, part of a bigger security discussion, but, you know, we look at this, or I look at this as a deterrent, it's going to be tough to catch people, especially the cameras, it's tough to pick out of faith, even the, the license plate readers, I don't know how accurate they are, but, and this is, this is not a Penfield problem, it's a, I don't know if it's statewide, but a county program, a problem, I know Steve's in contact with different towns, I know Perrington, and the same person that's doing the graffiti, it's possible they're doing it in multiple towns, I know that discussion's ongoing.
And, and, I'm sorry, I wanted to clarify, even if we, if, you know, if we can catch them before greater damage, you know, great, but, but we can always use surveillance to see if, if the individuals can be identified after the fact, you know, so if they need a service project to now like scrub everything that they put on the playgrounds, or, you know, this person used initials, does anybody recognize them? They need to pay up, you know, or contribute something, so that, that was, you know, what I was thinking more of.
No, I hear you.
You know.
No, and to your point earlier, you know, having the remote access, if they're patrolling the parks once or twice a night, I'm not sure what their schedule actually is, but, you know, once they leave Empire Boulevard, you know, they're probably not going back there, depending on the time of the shift, but having some kind of remote access, maybe there's a notification option where it senses somebody's walking around, you know, whatever lodge, building, it might be helpful where they can see it and say, oh, maybe there's something going on, we should take a ride that direction, you know? So I think there's some benefit to that, and Jim, I think in the beginning, you talked about, maybe, maybe I misheard you, but maybe I don't want to over-committee something, but, you know, maybe putting, you know, a small group together, because I think you probably would get five different opinions on what, you know, our vision is of security for the town, and probably three or four here in front of us as well. So, you know, maybe, maybe we could put together a little group that could just, you know, help make sure we're focused in the right directions as to where we want to be, but.
Yeah, that'd be great.
This is, this is also what's helpful, the towns within the county communicate a lot, where I think we're going to do a, there's an IT symposium that we're going to put together for January, because all those towns are, we're all dealing with the same issues, so I think that's something, you know, Steve can lead to communicating with other towns on what they're doing. But I think, I think we're all, I mean, we, getting Steve and the security access, I mean, I think that's. I mean, getting Steve and the security access, I mean, I think that's a goal we got to get to for sure. Okay, anything?
No, and I appreciate this and seeing the second tab there. So it came together. That's on me, so I apologize for that. I did not even see that there. So, yeah, I think it's good. It's a good understanding what we have, maybe what we need. And then as Bob said, looking at where's the priority, what's the top ten?
Jim, the infrastructure needs, in your experience, what kind of timeframe is that? If we said tonight, we want to get internet put in at Shadow Pines, what's that look like time-wise? Any guess?
Well, unfortunately, there's not very many residential houses, you know, subdivisions in that area. And the build-out for that, really, we're kind of stuck with one vendor right now. And I'm not going to mention who that is, but, you know...
An internet provider vendor, you mean, correct? Just for clarity.
ISP. So I would say, you know, if I put in a request for a service through that vendor tomorrow, it would probably take up to three months to get something put in there.
That's for the internet connection, just for clarity.
Yeah, and I'm basing that three months off of what we went through at the Little League to get it down there. Because we didn't have it there up until two years ago. We didn't have an internet connection there. So it took them a while to get permits to cross the roads.
So Rothus might be in a little better position?
Yeah, I mean, the perfect world would be in, I don't know if you know this or not, but back about 20 years ago, we put an infrastructure in fiber optic cable from here over to the DPW and then from the DPW over to the MAC building. We own that infrastructure, so there's no monthly cost to have that there. Whereas if we do like what we want to do at Shadow Pines and at Rothus Park, there will be a continuous payment for the rest of our lives unless we start thinking about maybe doing our own infrastructure. In other words, we own the right-of-ways. I mean, some of these locations are probably way far off for us to do that, but would it be feasible for us to put a conduit from here to the community center? It could be a real big cost savings for us over the future to do that because then you wouldn't have to have an internet connection there, you wouldn't have to have an internet connection here, you wouldn't have to have an internet connection at wherever. You could just have one and share it with the remaining buildings. But that, it would be the perfect world, right? Like, for example, down at the amphitheater. No reason why we can't put a conduit in going down to the amphitheater and install cameras down there and tie them into the system here. Now there's not really an infrastructure monthly recurring fee. So that's what I... I'm kind of a, I guess you can call me cheap. I like to do it as cheap as possible and keep it cheap. And that's one way to do it.
We call it efficient. That's the term we use in the public sector.
Efficient.
Cost-effective, efficient.
Cost-effective, efficient. But that would be, you know, I think, something to explore for ourselves because it works. We're doing it now. You know, it's almost unheard of to hear a town that's got, that has that type of infrastructure. Most of them have to pay for tie lines. I don't know if you know what a tie line is, but it's when you have, you know, your own tunnel through a provider, whether it be Spectrum, Greenlight, that provides you that path, but you have to pay for it every month. We don't have that cost here from here to the town hall or from the town hall to the DPW.
Jim, does the county still have a fiber network that's around and is that an option?
Yes, yes. And so we installed the fiber from the county at the MAC building. I think Mark helped me work on that a couple of years ago. I don't know if you're aware of that, but yes, the town or the town has a building with the county fiber in it. And right now that is providing our rain gauge that we have over at the MAC building. I don't know if you know, there's a rain gauge there that you can go on the county's website.
I learn something new every day.
Is that an efficient system that we're connected to?
Yes, it is, a very efficient system.
Okay, good.
So, you know, yeah, I don't know how far they go with that. I think that it's a possible, you know, it's something to explore.
See where it is, where it lives around the town.
Exactly. How can it help us, help them?
What about the schools?
The school is kind of its own thing. And I, you know, we've talked in the past to the school about maybe using some of their data connection because they get an E-rate. It's called an E-rate and it's a much more attractive cost, but they can't share that with the town because they're a school district. That's what I was always told.
They're getting a special educational.
Yeah, it's educational. It's got to be educational. And maybe now that we have deer at the community center, it's something maybe we could look at again. I don't know. But, you know, I started off, there's a lot of moving pieces to a surveillance system, especially when you have as many facilities as we have. And we started from nothing. So I like to think that we've done a good job so far and, you know, and hopefully it's deterred some of the graffiti or destruction or even stuff that shouldn't be happening in the parks. Hopefully it's deterred some of that. But I think that we could improve it and that's why obviously we're here.
And say, with Shadow Pines, we've already planned ahead. We don't have infrastructure there, but we put conduit in the ground from the road into the property. So it was part of, that's something shared with the board. It was a small extra ed cost, but obviously conduit in the ground, now we don't have to dig anything up. You know, we've got it, you know, right into the facilities.
And that was a Jim Kreckman flag at the start of the...
Well, yeah, you know, we could probably sit here and talk for a whole night about all of this, but I would love to meet, you know, some, at some other point and go over, you know, what we could do and how we can make it better.
That's great.
All right?
Anything else?
I'm hoping like my vision would be for security plus like maintenance or just even, you know, upkeep to be connected so that somebody like Jim, somebody like Steve, like whoever, right? Or somebody like Tim can have visibility into all the facilities or sewer pumps or these things so that if you know one is malfunctioning, that there is an alert or you can tell based, just, right? Leveraging technology to help us to kind of man all of Penfield and that Jim doesn't have to drive sewer pump to sewer pump to sewer pump like Christmas Eve to check everything's working. Like, so if it's an upfront investment and this 225 like number now sounds more like it versus the 12, I was, what is this, you know? I would much rather the town put that investment in so that we can, again, maintain, protect and preserve what we have. That's my goal. So I don't know if you're looking for an action item tonight? Are you looking for something tonight? No? Okay, then I...
I'm just giving you an overview of what we have and where we're possible future sites.
I think that's great. I think your idea and Bob's idea for that committee sounds like a great idea. And then maybe like, again, in a few months, Jeff, after you have a chance to talk internally also, we can get some, you know, project plan in...
I'm sorry, Lynn and I were just chatting about the ARPA piece to this, right? So we have some obligations there that we want to make sure we...
I just want to remind the board that from the town's ARPA allotment, the town board allocated $100,000 for security originally and not related to the Monroe County youth and senior aggregate...
Specific for cameras, I think, right?
That was, yeah, in the ARPA funds, the last round of the spending, the last of the town's ARPA funds, the resolution authorized $100,000 for security and didn't specify, I don't think, location, so...
It didn't. And so that's why we're, you know, again, this was like my ask to be like, well, how much does it cost? How much is a camera?
So maybe, I'm sorry.
So you could certainly use this list to figure out how to spend that $100,000.
I was going to say, and maybe that's something we need to move quickly if it's going to take three months sooner than later. And we'll have that security discussion, you know, in December. And I think I mentioned that to Steve.
It has to be used by 2026.
Correct. So you've already allocated it.
Yeah, it's done.
You've allocated and made those steps. I think that you can demonstrate that that's been met with the resolution. And then continuing, moving forward, I think our controller will be able to easily explain that there's a delay from a vendor and that it's getting implemented. And I think it would be implemented for sure before 2026 potentially.
Yeah, yeah.
The end of 2026.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Two years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else? Jim, all I could think of is this is going to keep you around for a couple more years. Just saying.
No response.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim. Have a good night. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
All right. So next slide, Mr. Clark Byrne, conditions assessment, Carrie.
So earlier, what month are we in? No, last month, forgive me. The Clark Road Barn Committee convenes to review the conditions assessment report that was provided by the structural engineer and architecture team that was tasked with doing that work. Everyone here has received that lengthy report. And I know that the town board was interested in having a follow-up discussion briefly. I will share that the next barn committee meeting is scheduled for next Monday where Carmen Torsia is going to be in attendance because the committee did have some follow-up questions and they thought it would be best to have him be in the room to be able to answer those questions. So I thought in response to the town board members to bring this up as a topic tonight to share with you, their next steps are answering those questions at the committee level. You know, I, at that last meeting, if anyone watched it, I shared with them that at some point, the town board is looking for recommendations or guidance. And even if it's not unanimous, even if everybody can't agree on what the next step is, even if they're providing you with guidance on here are the questions we want you to ask or the things we want you to consider. Because I think with a project like this, I'm not sure if we're going to get to a point where everybody says, yep, this is the thing we should do and here's how we should do it. I will share, I don't know if you guys want me to share like some high-level...
I think at this point, right, I think it's more valuable for us to kind of hear next Monday, kind of the questions answered with the consultant and review the report by them and then hear the recommendations. And then the board can kind of like digest some of that information. I don't think we... Are you guys comfortable with that?
No, I think my only thought was to ensure that there is a reason to have that committee still working. Because what I wouldn't want them to do is provide all this work and do anything and then it's just, no, we're just going to remove it. We're just going to demolish it. So I wanted to make sure that that committee had knowledge that they need to still working on it, that we do want the input. Because I think because the committee has been doing this for over a year now, that their time to it has a reason, has a purpose as we continue to see the continued degrade of the building itself. Now we have a price. And so even to be able to say, yes, the separate price of just stabilizing it makes sense to them. Because what I am concerned about is the committee continues to meet and then it comes back to us, we continue to debate and decide. And next thing you know, it's April and May and the cost now is up just to stabilize it. So that was my only concern for bringing it here is to make sure that that committee knows that, yes.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing happening here between that committee and then the town board. Because the question for the committee is, what's the building? How can the building be used? What's the building going to be used for? That really wasn't the charge of the barn committee. That's really a function for the town to determine whether it's town staff making recommendations to the town board or town board telling the town staff what you want to see happen or analyzing those uses. So that's been always the challenge is that there wasn't an identified use for the building.
We didn't know at the time whether or not it could even be saved, right? And so I think, and I think the advisory committee, I mean, there were several months where it was just kind of a wait and see until that conditions report came back. So I think if I'm hearing you, you want at least to give some assurance to them that it's not futile, right? Please review the report and make some recommendation.
Exactly. That them, and I know that that's what they're trying to determine and they have a lot of insight to it. And I think any person you talk to in this town, you'll get about maybe a 50/50 one day, 60/40 of somebody who wants to just knock it down, somebody who wants to save it. My concern is that that committee knows that now that this report came back, it can be stabilized, it can be saved. And so that they can continue doing that and make sure the town knows that they're still...
Yeah. For clarification, when we say stabilized, the structure would be stabilized for the purposes of taking down the exterior walls, the roof structure, having to redo the underneath of the floor. The only thing that would, could potentially, and that's a potential, be preserved is the interior timber frame structure.
Right.
That's the only thing that is salvageable. Nothing else. Outside, the roof is gone, the roof rafters, maybe half of them potentially could be, I think, half or a quarter. So everything would be new siding, new roofing, brand-new foundations and brand-new base or foundation flooring. And then new floors inside, so...
And that would be option one or the phase one of that report, correct?
No, no. Phase one was just holding, putting beams up.
Sure, braces on the side just to...
Doing braces on the side. Tarping the exterior tops and sides just to weather protect it.
Okay.
The rehabilitation portion, that's the 900 and change, $1,000.
Right.
That would be carefully dismantling the structure, trying to preserve the beams without damaging them while you're taking everything else down. Then new siding, but new material, trying to match the look and feel.
Then you have to store the beams in the meantime.
Store the beams and then redo the site.
So maybe to expand on what Candace said...
Those are the things that committee has to think about and talk about.
And timing is important before the snow flies and all that, so...
We are obtaining pricing on the tarp that, per your directive, Jim Kreckman is getting pricing for tarping the entire roof.
So can we discuss this in a December work session after that we get feedback on Monday from the board committee, barn committees? Does that make sense? Is that kind of the goal?
Yeah.
Because tarp, because it all plays into what we do. And if we're going to tarp the roof or whatever we're going to do, we probably have to do it soon before, you know, the weather changes. So does that make sense?
Continue to expend funds.
Yeah.
And I know you pulled together a chart of how much we've spent so far and obviously the meter keeps running as we wait, so...
Okay, anything else?
No, we can share the information for costs as we get them with the town board so you're aware. We're moving as quickly as we can. I think the same issue we ran into when we first initially tarped the portion of the roof is it can be challenging to find roofing companies that are willing to do prevailing wage work because it's a town-owned property. So we've reached out to a couple that we know will be able to give an estimate. So we are looking into that.
And I think we're pursuing the idea of what does it cost to bring the barn down to preserve the wood? Which sounds like that's something we may have to do regardless of what the final decision is. Maybe you already said that, but...
Yeah, I think other committee members during the course of conversation asked those questions out loud. No determination or answer was achieved. It was more thoughts that were being raised. And I think the idea was they wanted to get more detailed information from the Structural Engineer to really be able to move on with next steps. And we have a matrix that we developed at the beginning stage of the process. So, I think next week is going to be a time to bring that back out to the committee so they can sort of reframe, okay, let's see what we think, what should the recommendations be?
Carrie, can you just refresh, at least for me, the buffer, right? The dolomite buffer and how that could play into, no matter what it is we decide we want to do there and what, does it present a challenge that we're not thinking about right now?
Yeah, so, when we purchased the properties, the properties comprising the Shadow Pines property, dolomite as a requirement had placed a 200-foot buffer on Wayland Road and Clark Road on all sides of the property. So, 200 feet in from the, into the private property boundary. So, any structures that encroach into there, if, I'd have to look at the map. I'll be honest with you, I can't remember. I think that that 200-foot buffer encroaches into the building of where the barn structure is. So, if we wanted to proceed with some future, if repair, they haven't raised any issues or concerns with us tarping the roof, us putting the construction fence up. I don't know if, we probably would need to visit with them if we were looking at taking it down and putting it back up. And if that was going to be something that would be able to be achieved given that buffer that's in the deed, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, that doesn't allow us to put any new parking in. That doesn't allow us to do any other new expansion infrastructure within that. We had to have the same conversation with the Clark House across the street. So, we entered in conversation with them because obviously, we're doing an expansion on that. We came to some agreements to move the parking further from the road so that part of the project the board seen is relocated in the parking that kind of juts out towards Wayland Road, getting rid of where there used to be a tent area. So, moving things further away. So, as conversations depending where we go with the Clark Barn, that needs to be a conversation. If we take this down, they may not support putting it back in the same location. Their answer may be, let's move it outside the 200-foot buffer. We're not supportive because it is a deed restriction on that. So, as we talk, whatever this structure, if it goes forward, if it's a public facility, you need parking, you need utilities, you need infrastructure to support this. Currently, that would not be allowed in that 200-foot buffer. So, now you've got to look as the parking behind the building is, it snowballs from there. But that would be an important part of the discussion with them is if we take this barn wholly down to save the beams, they may say, hey, now's the time to move it out of the 200-foot buffer. Let's put it somewhere else, let's move it out of that area if you're going to rebuild it or, you know, do anything else with it. So, that definitely, to your point, you know, weighs into that. They did not waive that as part of the conversation on the Clark House because we didn't know where we were going with the barn at that point in time. So, they have allowed an exception for the Clark House because the historical piece is going to remain. And then, we made some modifications to turn, you know, the entryways to the north, have less focus towards the east, towards Wayland Road and, you know, get away from that corner. And they accepted that, the attorneys. We remapped the boundary just around, you know, the Clark House that allowed that to happen.
Okay.
So, I think that, I think that makes sense. I think that has to be part of the conversation next Monday, even at least to highlight, just to factor into the thinking. Right, just to, like, kind of, refresh everyone's recollection. I know when Bob and I were on the board at the time and it was proposed to remove it, we didn't, without knowing whether or not it had any historical significance or there were a lot of unknowns at the time and we just weren't supportive of, you know, taking down a building without having additional information. And so, yes, it's been an additional year. And like you said, Mark, the meter is running, we are paying for the fencing, we're paying for tarping, there are active expenses to it. So, I don't think this board wants to hold on to this for another year without some decision, right? I think we need to come to, you know, cut losses or move it, find some intended use that makes sense. Or, there was one, there was a tangential conversation of whether or not it could be acquired by other private entity or nonprofit entity to kind of restore and preserve the barn in a historical fashion there or elsewhere. So, I think these are all conversations we need to have very quickly.
Save the timbers and...
Repurpose it for something else, yeah.
Something else out of it or, you know...
We didn't know at the time if they could even be salvaged, right?
Sure. Well, I think that was the biggest factor is the timber frame itself is the part that's the most, like, interesting or...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sort of, part of the period. And so, and were they crumbling? No one could tell you that for sure. And the answer was, based on the testing that they did, the timber frames themselves, there might be one area or two that could be potentially compromised. But the timbers themselves seem to be in pretty good shape and could potentially, you know, be used. The challenge is, I think, for these kinds of projects is deciding, determining, like, could it carefully be taken down? Could it be carefully rehabbed? So, those are always the unknowns.
And we're going to get some of those answers.
Yes.
As soon as we can.
Carmen will be at the meeting next week with the committee to answer their questions and then we'll be back in with the updates at the next work session meeting, I hope.
Great.
I mean, the barn is still standing. So, it's, there is, but I get it. Taking it apart carefully is a different story. So, like, I don't think you're looking for an action item. So, again, like Jeff said, can we, after the Advisory Committee meets on Monday, can we have this brought back to the board work session in December? And then, we can kind of try to move forward and make a decision quickly?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I think it's a good plan.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move right into the senior youth ARPA funding. I believe we have about $135,000 and change left. You know, I want to tie this in to the Channing Philbrick elevated walkway. And I know we, you know, we just talked about cameras. There may be other way, the timing may be tough. So, we have the $100,000 for the cameras for security. If we decided we needed more, maybe it'd be another use. But it occurred to us, talking internally, that with the bridge going up, we could use that. The youth ARPA funding fits to the bridge, the cost is pretty close. And then, we'd have, by the end of the year, you know, it's all in process. So, you know, we'd satisfy all the youth ARPA funding. So, to me, it would make sense to use that money towards the bridge. So, I'm maybe tying a couple topics together, but just throwing that out there, so, yeah. Go ahead, Carrie.
Well, I was going to ask, we, just as a reminder and I'll point you down to the, oh, that's probably not, I think I'm missing something. The remaining balance was $135,002, $212 is at the last check. And so, the, somehow that is, oh, $135,212.
$212, yeah.
And this was the confirmed expenditure that was already memorialized in a resolution at a previous legislative session. So, I don't know if it makes sense to, I don't know if the board wants to review the results of the Channing Philbrick bid results, if that makes sense to do that and come back to this list? Or if you want to go through this list and identify potential expenditure?
Yeah. Do you want to present the bridge first? Is that okay with everyone or? What do you think?
Unless someone's got an immediate comment, we could listen to that and...
Just so we know the cost and what's involved and see if it fits into the ARPA funding, if that's okay?
Is that okay, so...
Okay. So, we did get five bids, which was, which was good on the bridge. We had a range of prices from $785,000 to $1.3 million. So, quite a range, but the low two were very close together. So, we were happy with the bids that we got.
And then, $1.3 came in first, so it made us a little nervous.
I sweat a little bit as I opened that one.
Not that one.
That one made me sweat a little. But I say, we did get a letter from MRB. They've worked with this group before. They actually installed the small portion of aluminum bridge that's out there. If you've walked it, that was installed when I first started, so many, many decades ago. But that bridge is, you know, still up. But this one, we're looking to incorporate all of those together. So, we have this estimated at $750,000. They actually came in at $735,000. We added a $50,000 contingency on it to everybody's bid. That's for small incidental stuff that comes up along. So, that puts us to the $785,400. So, that is, you know, right in the range of where, you know, we had expected this to come in. Their group, sounds like if the board's willing to, wants to move ahead, they'd like to get on it as soon as possible. So, it could be a winter project for them, which would minimize impacts to the park. So, we will need to close this trail for that portion. So, we would have to let Perrington know, close it off on the other end outside of Perrington, close it off in Philbrick Park. There's an area that, you know, kind of at the base of Honey Creek Trail, if you know where that comes down, there's an area that's going to be a staging area that makes a logical, you know, stopping point and then the contractor would have that piece. So, it would have less impact to the park if they could do it. You know, we've given them through, I think, August 1st for substantial completion and September 1st for final completion. That was if they wanted to do it spring, summer. But if, you know, this group, you know, is interested in possibly doing it during the winter, which, again, would, you know, limit how much the impact is to the park, to the trails. Obviously, less people are hiking in the wintertime. We've worked with this group before, MRB, you know, was comfortable with this group. So, it's kind of part one of it. And I don't know if the board wants to ask questions, discuss that first. And then, we've got a proposal from MRB for the construction admin and the observation portion, which we can discuss.
So, our best, the access they're going to use is through Channing Philbrick?
It is. So, we were very explicit about that. We made sure we did a walk out there at the pre-bid meeting. So, we've identified areas right near the former Parks Building where they can have staging, they can stockpile stuff there, have a viola box or verdy box, whichever, store materials on site at that location. They would have to, and the best you can get is a one-ton up the trail. And then, they can have a small fenced area up the trail a little ways. But, you know, made them aware, obviously, because we talked about vandalism earlier, they need to be very aware of protecting their materials, getting concrete in and everything else. So, everyone, we made very clear that that is your access. There is no other way to get in, so they understand. And I think that, you know, is why we estimated the price to be so high. But, you know, just getting access in is kind of tough to that location. It's a little bit remote.
So, it won't hurt any of our existing trails? Not that they're going to be clearing wider paths or anything like that?
No, there's, and we walked it and I think, working with Parks, you know, Tim is here. If there's areas we need to do a little, you know, tree trimming or, you know, brush clearing along the side, but we don't expect any mass tree clearing. There is a fairly well-established path to at least get back to where that staging area is. You know, they then have access, you know, past that. They've had a bobcat at least into where the first bridge is if you're walking in from the park. They've used it in the past where they have an auger on the end of the bobcat drive. Out, drill in the structural supports for it. It's an augered system, augers in, drop the panel on. They actually drive back onto the panel, reach out, auger in the next two pieces, drop the panel on, so they work right from the platform. So, that's also, doesn't have any impact on timeframes. As we've talked about other projects, we've got to stay out of the creek during salmon run season, you know, trout run. Since we're working just on the shoulder, they won't be in the water. So, there is no restriction on that. We have all our permits from DEC, but they're working on the shoreline. So, as part of it, they've got to take the old bridge out. You know, they've asked, can we kind of install the bridges we go along and then remove the older portions, take it over the new bridge out? And I said, yeah, that's your means and methods of how you want to...
Like I say, I'm sure you looked at it, but there's no benefit from where Perrington just came into that area that we could work an agreement to...
Unfortunately, not. It's a further distance. We did look at that. There were some smaller, just, you know, I call them pedestrian bridges, but, you know, small bridges over little creeks. You know, Boy Scouts have done those. Those support, obviously, people wouldn't be supportive of equipment or get anything in. You know, we've got two small concrete pads you've got to pour at either end. They're aware that they're going to have to, you know, buggy that in. You're not going to get a concrete truck back in there. So, we made sure everybody was very aware of the constraints of access, you know, getting in ahead of it. So, you know, there shouldn't be any asks or additional needs that, you know, they didn't consider in their bid.
Got it. And just, maybe it was already said, the decision tonight is whether to move forward. And if we don't, we would, we would just, we'd have to close the trail, right? Is that where we're at?
We're getting to that point that, yeah, I mean, if anybody's walked it recently, the pictures I've shared, the bridge is not in great condition now. So, any, any which way the bridge should be, the existing bridge should be removed. If the board moves ahead, we would remove that as part of the new installation. If we don't, we've got to kind of figure out what do we do next? Because we're going to have to take out the piece that's, you know, pieces that aren't good now. And then, now we don't have that trail connection.
And if I remember correctly, when this came before the board some time ago, this was the last piece, right, for that full connection from, I forget the name of the...
The county's been touting now, you can get from Victor basically all the way to Arundic Lake Bay on trail connections. And, you know, obviously, the Perrington completed their piece from Spring Lake Park. They just did a nice trail connection up to this. We had our piece in long before and now ours is just aged and, you know, in need of, you know, replacements. So, we've had the trail connection much longer, but their infrastructure looks, you know, quite nice now and we just have a very aging wooden bridge that's, you know, becoming unsafe.
So, whatever the bid that's ultimately awarded, there's still going to be a delta and that's been budgeted for, right?
For the $785 piece, I mean, that's something the board needs to allocate. So, we didn't have that, you know, budgeted in our next year's budget. So, this is something that needs to come out of the general fund for this because we didn't have a specific number for that.
Okay. And I think, and I saw Tim nodding a couple times while you were speaking, so... I'm sorry? Oh, I thought you said something. So, okay, so it supports like the connectivity and the part of the master plan as well? So, my only pause earlier was that there are other projects in queue, but I'm assuming there was at least some internal discussion to identify this as like a priority? And I hear, hear from you as to the reasons for that. So, unless there's any other objection or concern, I can make a motion?
Go on.
So, hearing Noah at least, other thoughts for the identified projects on the spreadsheet? I'd like to make a motion to award the remaining $135,212 to the Channing Philbrick Walk Bridge Project.
So, one is an allocation of the ARPA funds.
Right.
Yep, to augment...
To supplement the cost of theirs.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, we would have to come back for the rest of it.
Figure out how to fund the rest.
Yeah, making sure that was the piece, so that was the...
This is action item, you know, whatever.
So, coming back to item D is moving for that.
So, we're really moving two things to move forward with the project.
No, 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 my motion was only for awarding the remaining ARPA funding, action item D.
$135.
Yeah, so, let's do that first if...
Okay.
Yeah, that was my motion, Mark. I'm just looking, I'm looking for a second now.
I agree with that. I didn't see anything on the list. I think this is a perfect one that fits. You know, it's both for our youth and both for our seniors, really. That will benefit all residents, so I will second that motion.
Okay, I think Kevin already beat you.
Everybody's looking around.
You started it.
Any other comments?
Oh, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All aye?
And Mark, real quick, what's the timeframe that we have this pricing for this bid? Is there a window where we've got to be...
I think we set it for 45 days. So, I'm looking if the board moves on action item E next. I would have a resolution in place for December 4th and then provide them a notice to proceed on December 5th, have the supervisors sign that and sign the contract. So, then, you know, we'd keep the board informed of timing and everything else. But I think they were looking at it that this could be a nice winter project for them. I think it'd be less impact to the park and we'd be back up and running, you know, late spring, early summer.
Okay, maybe you answered it. I was, and maybe you already said it before, a couple months, three months, I think is what...
That's what we, that's what we roughed out for it. Unless they run into, obviously, we get a heavier winter than we've had in the past or other complications, we would do a pre-construction meeting with them, you know, kind of go through all that and then share their, you know, their full timeline with the board.
Trout season's on April 1st, Tim? You know, perfect timing. Okay.
So, for action item E, I'm assuming that we've all had a chance to review. I understand that for the five contractor bids, one was extremely high and one was not responsive to each of the bid elements. So, if, if that's correct, then it's really contractor two, three and four that's on the table for...
Contractor one responded to all elements. They just had a math calculation, but they would still be the low bidder.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I read incorrect on the bid sheet.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, is, no, 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 no.
They had all the items. The only thing contractor one is our recommendation for, so, CMI is our recommendation for the...
Contract one?
Yes, for the, for the award. Basically, they miscalculated the math between adding $735,000 and $50,000. So, they came up with $780,400. They had a written statement in there as we do math and a written statement. The written statement supersedes that. So, we just wanted to make that clear for the board that they had a math error, but they still came in well below the second bidder. But they had all the other contractual elements in their bid.
Okay, so, I misunderstood that then. But are we, are we certain in addition to the mathematical error? I'm going back to Carrie one time where there was a math error and I think they forgot to respond to page, the back page of something. For all the elements here, it's at least been clarified with CMI that there's no other discrepancies in between the, I understand it supersedes, but I just want to make sure that...
Correct, yeah. We confirmed with them, there was only one addendum. Everybody acknowledged addendum number one, there was not a, you know, a missed...
A missed addendum.
Of that. This was clearly just a mathematical error, even with the mathematical correction that did not change who the low bidder was.
So, then, CMI is the lowest responsive bidder?
Correct.
Correct, okay, all right.
Counsel is good with that correction or that?
I am, I am okay with that because the bid was, I haven't reviewed it, but from what Mark just said, the bid was complete and it just had an error and it was confirmed. What was the math amount as opposed to the written amount?
So, they had, their bid was $735,400 with an add of $50,000. They wrote $780,400 was the number that they wrote down. So, it's a $5,000, they just, a pure mathematical error was a $5,000 difference. So, that didn't substantially change who the low bidder was. That didn't, you know, impact anything with that.
Clear computation error.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, then if there are no objections with CMI being the lowest responsive bidder, I'd make a motion to award the project to CMI for contract number one. I am. I second that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look, Mark, really quickly, is there, there's no phase two that's being awarded separately?
There's no alternates, the only other piece was the, the construction admin was the, the second part of the conversation. But as far as there was no alternates, no anything else, it was just a one lump sum bid was the, the entire bridge project. So we didn't split it any other separate contracts.
Okay, so it's just one general contract? I'm just trying to see if I need to, so that one resolution is sufficient, you're not looking for an additional?
Nope.
For contingency, okay.
And the contingency is ours.
We added that in and made that part of it soon.
Okay.
Okay.
Barry.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Leanhouse.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Tecklish.
Aye.
All aye.
So then before we, sorry, go ahead.
I assume that, so you're going to talk about the construction management?
Yes.
And I assume after that, then there'd also be a resolution to amend the budget to, to allocate the funds?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought you said.
That could be embedded into the resolutions.
I mean, we can embed them together, we can, I mean, they're two separate contracts, so that would be item E point two or whatever was a separate. Subpoint. But we did get a, a quote, and I included that as well in, in the board's drop, for construction administration as well as construction observation from MRB. So they would be out there, they would review the similar, similar as we've gone through with looking at the DPW. You know, they would review those, they would have somebody on site, you know, inspecting it, you know, on an as-needed basis. You know, looking at the soil tests, looking at the concrete, you know, compression tests, making sure everything is installed according to design and spec. So that's a separate contract with MRB would be for that construction administration and construction observation.
Okay, so I missed it, do we need another resolution?
We do need.
We'd do a separate resolution for that.
And Sarah's involved in like computing, keeping track of, right? The additional monies that are not part of the 2025 budget?
Yes, we've shared with Sarah and looped her in on that, so.
Okay. Okay, I can make the motion again. I'd like to bring a motion to authorize the supervisor to enter into a, the general construction oversight with MRB in an amount not to exceed 50,000.
Oh, it's nine, is it?
I thought you said 40, did I not read?
Excuse me, there's two pieces, so altogether it's 90,300.
I, I'm sorry, I did it two separate.
So it's the construction admin and then the construction observation.
So construction, into a contract, general contract to include the construction admin and construction observation in an amount not to exceed 100,000.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any comments, no? Sue?
Barry.
Aye.
Lee. Aye.
Leanhouse.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Tecklish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, next item is draft local law to add renewable energy systems regulations to chapter 250 of the town code. Carrie?
Thank you, this is a.
Good night, gentlemen.
This is a proposed local law that has been in development and under review for the last couple of months with the EECC. At the EECC's last meeting, they identified my, final edits and changes and were ready to advance it to the town board for consideration and setting a public hearing. So the, in order to, we've got a solar moratorium that's currently in place. And these regulations will be once, you know, navigated and hopefully approved, would be the end of that, that moratorium because those regulations would be established. So recommending, recommending a public hearing for December 4th. The, the draft local law has been posted to the town's website and can be made available in the town clerk's office as well. And so looking to set the public hearing and, we don't need a resolution to set the public hearing. I just want to establish that we're officially accepting the, the local law. And I'm stumbling over that, so Peter, if you need to clean any of that up, please let me know.
We're good, so we're accepting the local law in its current form and we'll have a public hearing on that. As to whether or not to adopt it.
Right, correct. And then we would anticipate, once the public hearing concludes, we would continue conversation at the town board level. If substantive changes are made, we would set another public hearing potentially. But if no substantive changes are made and it's minor word changing or wordsmithing, then you could move forward. I believe the earliest for adoption would be the February meeting, since the January meeting is organizational.
So is, are you asking for an action item tonight? To set the public hearing or?
Yeah, so we don't need, we don't need a town board, like action to set the public hearing, but to accept that we've, you, you accept the, the draft local law and, right? I'm sorry, Peter, I'm struggling here.
Take a vote to that.
Set the, or to set the public hearing and then.
Set the public hearing because then.
That's establishing the start of the public.
Come and decide.
Yeah, we just don't need a resolution to do that, but.
So typically, what we do is, is the last draft would be on the desks of the members of the town board. That's what has to happen. And really, I mean, it's more like, this is an informational item more than anything else.
But we've in the past done the resolution to introduce the, the draft law and set the public hearing, but the, we're hoping to have the public hearing on December 4th. So.
We don't need, we don't, we don't need a formal resolution to set, because if we, if we wait to have a formal resolution to set the public hearing, then you're going to have that resolution adopted in February and then, and then that'll be in January. So we're just going to set the, the public hearing and, and really this is more, I think it's more of an informational item, that this is the draft that's going to be considered at the public hearing.
So I am not opposed to, to, not opposed to the 12th war hearing, just have a question. Are we assuming a lot, because we, it's been, it's been worked through the committee often and I, Kevin, you've been working on it closely with them a lot. Like, and this is not the first time of, of the draft, so I, I'm just asking, can we have a resolution prepared for the December ledge meeting? And assuming no public participation or objections or other feedback at the hearing, then, and, and the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've done that before, so.
Okay.
I think staff should be prepared with a draft approval resolution in the event that the town board decides to adopt this local law.
Right, because and, and we've already reviewed the draft and if no changes are made, then we can adopt it in December as opposed to February. So it's, if that's okay, then.
Yeah, you could adopt it in, right after the public hearing.
Right, because.
Do it right then and December.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because then the draft that you have in your presence, if it's not.
Will be the final draft.
Will be the final draft and you've had it for more than the 10 days. I think, without knowing if anybody in the public might want to come out and have.
Oh, yeah, 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 so again, then we, we just, we just won't pass it.
I'm happy to prepare.
Ready to go, get you ready to act. And if something comes up and you decide, you know, we want to change that, then you don't act on that.
And at the last EECC meeting, that was part of what was brought up was the hope that this could be expedited if, depending on the public hearing and that it would, it would not last, you know, take as long.
Okay. So Kevin, with all your work with the committee, you want to make that motion?
And the motion is?
To have that draft resolution prepared for adoption after the.
All right, so I will make a motion to have a draft resolution prepared for the December legislative meeting.
Wonderful.
I'll second.
Okay, Sue?
Barry.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Leanhouse.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Tecklish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, next item is 470, 47 Willow Pond special use permit applications. And Carrie, before you get into this, just quickly, we, we got feedback last night, or I did, with sit down from the supervisor, and this may have been reiterated, well, it was, I think, during the planning board. And we're trying to get as much information out to the public as we can. So I'd like to, like to ask Mark and Carrie to review how Penfield posts information compared to other towns and report back to the board, you know, maybe at the next work session.
Yeah, happy to do that.
I know there's been questions about why we don't put everything up, why every document is on the website. So that sounds, obviously, very timely, you know, we can see how other communities do it, how much information they share. And, you know, obviously, through foil laws, you can always access everything. But, you know, there's some logistical things to put everything on the website, but we can see what other communities do and how we compare and make sure we're, you know, sharing information with the public.
It also might avoid a foil if we have enough information out there that the public doesn't need.
Yeah, we can see how we compare with others around us and what they put and what's available for the public to review ahead of a meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yeah.
There was also during that public, during the planning board meeting, there was a, a question raised about why the planning board doesn't have their emails available on the website for people to contact. And I, I think part of the reason is that, you know, they're acting in a different capacity than the town board. You are all legislators in addition to sometimes a reviewing board, like the planning board is just a reviewing board. And when they are receiving information, I want to keep the record clear and route it through the planning department so that all of the board members receive the same information. And that, you know, there isn't ex parte communications while an application is pending. It's really kind of different than, than the town board. And I didn't have a chance to really fully explain that during the hearing, but I would be not in favor of putting planning board individual emails on there. If, at one time, there was like a planningboard@penfield.org email, but I think what they, they typically do today is it just goes to the planning department and they distribute it to, they put it in the, in the drop so that the planning board members all get that information. So that was just another citizen comment that was received.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, yeah. So I'll turn it back to you.
Oh, sure.
Willow Pond, yeah.
So as the, the board and the community is aware, the proposed change in development plan for the existing Willow Pond Plan Development is, has to navigate both the planning board and the town board to change any component that's already been previously approved. The last remaining developable parcel in the Willow Pond Plan Development District has an approval that was granted previously. They recently navigated the site plan review process for preliminary site plan approval and the planning board awarded that at their November meeting. So the next step is to come to the town board to, to make application for a special use permit to allow the change in use. And then in this instance, the change in use is the previously approved development included a senior living facility. The unit count is described in the letter of intent. The proposed change in use is to allow multifamily residential development. I think the original plan was 150 units. The current plan is 88 units. And so the ask from the town would be to set the public hearing for the special use permit. And a, and a separate public hearing at this board is required per our code at the December 4th meeting. And then if you have questions or want to chat about the special use permit components, the applicants are here to address those, or if you'd rather wait until the public hearing, that's an option too. I just always feel like when it's an application-based item, I like having them here at the work session. So there's, if there's clarifications that are needed, they can address that. But if not, then we can just proceed to setting the public hearing.
Okay, any questions?
I, I had questions. I don't know that they need to be answered tonight. We could, I could certainly wait until.
They can be answered, it's, it's completely up to you.
Okay, yeah.
I can wait to.
Right, so I have a couple of questions and then maybe Linda. So Chris, I'm trying to remember when we were last together at the work session and I, I'm sorry, I can't remember any of the names who joined you that night. But there was, there were a lot of residents here and I think there were some representations made by Mark Four as well as the owners of the proposed, that there were communications with the residents and particularly the ones that will abut the property, are those still ongoing?
Well, so the answer to that is no.
You got to speak into the microphone.
You got to pull it over.
They're not ongoing, I think we've resolved to the best, to the best of where it's going to be with those neighbors. We did have extensive discussions with them. And they've indicated that they get it, they're okay with it now. They prefer not to have an apartment complex, apartment building in their backyard. But there, we were able to, based on the public feedback we got from our public hearings and our meetings with our immediate neighbors, we revised the plans, moved the buildings, moved the parking, moved garages away from that southwest border. And so we have a nice landscaped buffer there, which I think they appreciate.
And I couldn't tell from the revised, I, I see the, the, I don't know what to call it, the drawing for the elevation materials and colors, but I, I'm so sorry, it is just, it's too small, even if I zoom in like a million times, so I couldn't tell. I think one of the resident comments was that the, the height of the building deviated in, from the initial plan, where the expectation was, could it be a two-story building as opposed to a three-story building? Do you remember that conversation?
We do, and what we did was BME prepared a height comparison with an elevation in the building showing that it's really the same site, same height as a two-story building. Because we have a flat roof, next door, there's two, two-story buildings with peaked roofs, the red brick buildings.
Next door where the medical office buildings are?
Correct, those are our office buildings and they're two stories. And I honestly, off the top of my head, I don't have the exact heights, but.
It's hard to, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, Carrie, it, I'm looking at the document, it's, it's titled three dash four, three dash 47 Willow Pond. It's the exterior elevation materials and colors.
Yep.
And I, I just, I couldn't, couldn't read any of the font or the legend. And so I was trying to determine with Chris, like, what is the elevation now? And instead of the two, three, so I don't, I don't know if it has height in there anywhere. I just couldn't tell from any of the application materials if it's reflected.
The building height, we certainly can provide materials that were supplied to the planning board during its application process. I would have the height comparison information that was prepared.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I can help answer just.
Yes, please.
The actual height of the, the proposed buildings. The maximum height proposed that the planning board approved was 40 feet. That doesn't extend for the entirety of the building, so the majority of the building is at 35 feet. And then there's a portion in the fronts, by the front door that extends up to 40. There's a parapet, so to speak, on the.
What's a parapet?
It's a fake wall extending where, above the roof. Yep, it's just a stylistic.
Yep.
So it still comes above 35 feet or two stories?
Yeah, so, and then we, we did the percentages, 60, and I believe it was in the letter also, I believe 67% was 35 feet tall and the remaining percentage of the building length was, extends up to 40. But it's basically the portions of the front of that building, the front facade, which face east and west are 40 feet. And then the rear of the building is all at 35 feet, so hopefully that clarifies.
Well, and our, our code, right, for PD is a maximum building height restriction of two stories or 35 feet, whichever is less. So I know that might be a very specific within our town code, within a planned development, but if it's 35 feet and over here is 40 feet, that's one of my key questions is, is that will also be a change, correct?
Well, I would defer to Pete on this question, but I know that the, the PD district was designed with flexibility in mind. So that if the proposed development, the design of it was in keeping with the town's idea of what a good development is and should be, that there's discretion between, architectural discretion that can be granted as part of, through the, the development review process. The planning board's purview is for site plan, which typically includes building massing, the general layout of the buildings on the site to minimize impacts and allow buffering. And so in their review of the application, in granting preliminary site plan, that means that they're, they were comfortable with the design as presented. Again, I think the language in the, the code is intended to give the planning board discretion, excuse, planning board discretion and the town board discretion to allow configuration of uses that meet the neat, the, the intended purpose of that district, which is to create a mix, it was essentially, Penfield was one of the first towns to have a mixed-use development language before that was even a thing in suburban communities. And so Willow Pond is, I think, and Mark Four can correct me, they, they claim that they may be the first suburban. may be the first suburban mixed-use development project in Monroe County because it happened back in the 80s and 90s, and that was not a thing that was happening. So, I think the intent of the language was to be, allow creativity and flexibility.
This isn't mixed use.
No, this is planned development district.
Right, right.
But if you read the intent of the planned development district, it's allowing flexibility in considering development site plans. And apologies, Pete, all eyes are on you right now.
So, I'm gonna look, I'll have to look back at that as far as whether, as far as which board exercises that authority, because I don't remember. I'd have to look.
I believe through the, I believe through the planning board review process, and I think that's why it was covered with the planning board. It was determined that the planning board does have the review authority of that...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna confirm.
And that's not a zoning? That doesn't, isn't something that goes to the zoning board?
Not in a PD.
Not in a PD.
Okay.
So, the planning board and staff did have an architectural consultant review the project, including the height, as part of the planning site plan review. Architects submitted materials and information and narrative about it. And then, I think, and then the planning board made the determination that it was an appropriate height based on the information they had reviewed and the expert consultants that had reviewed the product, project and submitted, you know, a report to them.
So, Pete, then there...
I'll confirm that, though. I mean, I'll look back. I can't, I don't have the memo handy that we looked at those issues. So, I know that's a concern of the town board, so I'll look into that and see how we kind of sketched out the roles of the boards. Because this is a little bit of an unusual project in that it's coming back again for a revised plan. I just don't have that handy tonight, and I don't want to misspeak.
You know, one of, oh, sorry.
Oh, Pete, then there is, in fact, not a code that is two stories or 35 feet, whichever is less?
That provision, I do believe, you read that from our code, yeah.
In planned development, yeah, right in the E-code.
But, as Carrie said, it's, the PD has got some flexibility built into it to vary those requirements. So, I'll get back to you with more information about that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think another thing that influenced the planning board when they did make that determination is we can, we can fit more apartments on this site at two stories. It's just a crummy design with not much green space, and it would be right up against the neighbors.
What's the green space, what's the green space as proposed here?
37% versus the 10% required per the PD code.
But why not just go with less apartments, then? Why do you have to have, what did you say, 88?
It's a good fit for this site. You know, this is a PD, it's not, this is a good fit for this site. We could have, I forget the number, over 100, I believe, in two-story buildings, or we could have two apartments. But this is a good fit. Our site plan, you know, keeps the buildings away from the neighbors. It's a good transition between the neighbors and 441. It's got a lot of green space, connects, has a couple access points. This is a good design, and it's an appropriate number of apartments for this location. The town needs housing, and so, I would think you'd want as many apartments as you could get. We'd like to build as many apartments as we can in a good design. We want our tenants, our residents, to like where they live. It's easier to sell, to rent these things when it's a nice project. And this is gonna be a nice project. People are gonna want to live there. People are gonna be happy when they're driving by it. Our neighbors are gonna think it's nice. This is a good design. Like I said, we could've made it bigger, or had more units. We could have less units, but this is a nice sweet spot. 88 units is a good amount right here.
The documents always talk about the number of units. What about capacity? What was the capacity of the assisted living, and what would be the capacity of these units? As far as people who can live there?
Oh, it's a mix of one- and two-bedroom units.
Okay.
There may be a couple three-bedroom units. It's our experience that whether it's a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom apartment, it's usually one or two people living there. These aren't marketed families. It's, they'll be three bedrooms, it'll be one, a couple who use a, you know, who use, have a guest room and an office. Well, families are certainly not prohibited. If somebody wants to put their 10-year-old in a, in the third bedroom, that's fine. We don't anticipate that. So, one to two people. And our traffic study addressed that, the number of anticipated cars in a, in a project like this.
Was the assisted living 150 single occupancy units, do you know?
I don't think it was specified. It was 150 units. I did talk to our owners, we used to operate assists, thousands of assisted unit, assisted living units. Sometimes, those units are, you know, a married couple. So, it's not 150 people max. That is not, that's a 150 units. I don't know the ratios off the top of my head, but no, 150 was not the max capacity of a 150-unit assisted living facility.
Do you know what the proposed height was of that facility in the original plan? Offhand?
I don't, offhand. It was two stories. It was peaked, peak-roofed. So, it was probably right around 38 to 40 feet. That's what, a two-story building with a peaked roof, and that's a assisted living facility, can't have low, you can't have six-foot, seven-foot, eight-foot ceilings. You've got nine or 10-foot ceilings plus the space in between each floor plus a peaked roof.
The reason I asked about whether or not there were ongoing conversations is, because really, you might have a lot more aggregate feedback of the directly impacted people who live in the area, in addition to all the traffic studies, et cetera. And it's, we get a lot of feedback on this, but they're, they're individual, right? So, that you were, you were much closer, so that's why I was wondering. It looked like, at least for the revised Penn, it looked, it looked like to me that the number of units had gone up from 84 to 88, and I, and I couldn't really quite tell if that was accurate in terms of spacing, or, go ahead.
I think it might, they're 44-unit buildings. It's the same architectural design as our other 44-unit buildings. If it said 84, I think there was a typo.
Okay, okay.
They're 44-unit building.
Okay. I was, I was just trying to compare from the original to the revised, like, what, what changed, and, you know...
Yeah.
Granada correction.
Yeah, not an expert in these architectural drawings, and I couldn't even read half the font here. So, I was, what does that even mean? So, I, you know, and I think we defer in part to, like, the expertise and of the work of the planning board, since a lot of that information comes up. So, I do still have some concerns just based on the general feedback that we heard a few months ago, right? Total occupancy, the green space, which I hear you've now at least modified with moving the building and then proximity to the neighbors, and then just general traffic for that area, and whether or not it would be dramatically increased in terms of congestion. I understand that, you know, for me, the way I distinguish between an assisted living facility is that, generally speaking, they are, tend to be a bit more static, right? It's not adding a lot of traffic flow during busy hours. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, oh, I'm sorry. Apologies. It was gonna be fully staffed, is my understanding?
Oh, yes, I know. There's still gonna be employees and nurses and things, but...
And they'll come in shifts.
It's a different traffic pattern.
Staff is not going back and forth.
And our traffic study addressed, to some extent, that issue. And Barton, how, did the traffic study review? Barton?
Barton Le Judas.
Correct. Reviewed that and agreed with our traffic engineer's findings. Interestingly, you guys saw there were 50-plus people here when this was, this project was first brought up, and there were 50-plus people at the first planning board public hearing. And the supervisor, one of you asked about what materials do we make available to the public? And we made the materials available to our neighbors. Most of the people who were here were here because there's a serious speeding problem on, on the other side of Willow Pond Way, and they want something to be done about that. Our immediate neighbors, you know, they have legitimate concern, there's something gonna go up in their backyard.
Right, right, right.
They had available to them the materials, and I think the town made, made it available to them, we made it available to them. So, they saw our traffic report. They saw our architectural details. They saw the consultant reviews, that we didn't just make it up. Another professional licensed engineer reviewed it and said, "Yeah, that's absolutely correct." So, transparency of making that stuff available is useful for everybody. If there's facts to back up a position, everybody should have them. We made those available, and then, so, at our second-to-last planning board meeting, our, some of our immediate neighbors came to the meeting. One of the neighbors spoke on behalf of all of them, said, "Yes, we've met with them. You know, here are a few remaining concerns." None of the people on the other side of Willow Pond came because their concerns had been addressed, that it wasn't gonna be this apartment. And I don't think anybody came at our last planning board meeting. That's, we gave them the facts.
That's what I was gonna add, was a lot of those site planning topics that you just covered, the, the buffering to the neighbors, the traffic, overall traffic, and changes that the traffic could do to the neighborhood. A lot of that stuff was reviewed through the whole planning board process.
Yeah, yeah, as it should.
And as Chris mentioned, a lot of those neighbors' concerns were taken in through both just them submitting comments, through the public hearings, and, and then us as a team, making sure that the proposed plan is addressing those, those comments through the planning review process itself. So, by the time we got to the planning board's last meeting, they were comfortable with doing that preliminary approval to, because they felt that a lot of those, those comments have been addressed at that point, so.
I have a question, probably best geared toward the staff. So, you know, somebody wants to build an apartment complex at Willow Pond, and they do a traffic study and say the effect's gonna be minimal. Around the corner, someone wants to build a fast food, they do a traffic study, they say the effect's gonna be minimal. Down the street, someone wants to build a coffee shop, they say the effect's gonna be minimal. Is anybody, or is there any function that looks at the overall impact of all this in real time as it's happening?
So, I...
So, one, we have our, we have an expert consultant in traffic, so we ask them to look at, and we share all of our projects with them, so they look at that. The biggest one most recently is the 250 corridor, we look at mixed use. That's gonna be the most, let's see, significant change as that develops out. So, we have looked at the whole corridor, we've worked with the state DOT. So, on 441, specifically with Willow Pond, the state DOT is the governing agency, that's their road. They did provide a letter back, say they had no concerns about this project, so they were looped in on that. There's a traffic light there, there's, you know, so they've reviewed it, and then we also, obviously, then Senate Department, Le Judas is our consultant, we work with them to look at those, is your point, compounding projects along the way, and how does that add up? And specifically, we've looked at 250, different than this, knowing that as all these mixed-use projects come in and they're in the future, there needs to be a plan on how we make road improvements, and, you know, what does that comprehensive improvement look like? Signal timing, everything else. So, we do work, you know, closely with the state and county DOT to look at, do we need to review signal timing? And their consultant, as his protocol, looks at traffic lights up and down the road, so not just the one in front of Willow Pond. We ask them to look all the way back to, you know, five-mile line, look at what's the impact to 250 and 441. So, as these add in, to your point, how do these compounding impacts, you know, occur? And how does that, you know, impact the overall area?
And the only thing I'll add is, in the, this particular application, it's a, an existing planned development district, and so, this whole development plan was approved in, in its entirety at one point in time. And through the years, as development preference or needs changed, they would come back to the planning board and town board to say, "Oh, we said we were gonna build seven, you know, condos here, instead, we're gonna do something different," and they got approval to do that. The last time they came to the board was with this parcel being developed as that assisted living facility. That plan never was implemented, and so now they're back here. What we're looking at is comparing the, the traffic of what was initially approved to what is being proposed, but as part of that traffic impact, they're looking at the broader development area. I know as part of other development sites, when a traffic impact study is required, they, the consulting team will contact the community to find out what projects are, have been approved recently, are there any other that are in the pipeline, so that they're not just evaluating what's on the ground right now, they can anticipate additional trips that might be added to the system in the future, so they can capture that appropriately.
They need to incorporate those into their calculations as that goes in. So, as Carrie said, they'll contact us and say, "What else has been approved, or what else is in the queue?" We provide that to them, they add those into their, their analysis and their programs to show those cumulative effects. So, not only is this being added, but we've got something else coming down the street, or this was just approved. So, you know, that adjusts their numbers, so it is an industry standard to do that.
Right. And there has been census traffic, since all of this has been going on with the original, there is a Jersey Mike's, there is a Five Guys, there is a proposed Chick-fil-A going within that intersection, there's talk about a Costco. So, I think that's what Kevin was getting to, is there are things in the queue, there are things in the queue that will likely go through. And while this traffic study, I think it did, what, two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon, one day? And it said, "Okay, this is, this is what we got from it." In addition, you know, the traffic study talked about accidents within that, and, you know, rear ending and things like that. The one concern I heard from the residents, and the gentleman probably didn't see it, but we could see it here, is the last time when you told us that their concerns had been addressed, and they were okay with it, multiple people in our audience said, "No, that's not true," shook their head. So, I am still concerned about our residents. I am still concerned about the number of accidents, and what is? When they, when they told you, "Our concern is the traffic on those roads and people speeding, what is, what's the solution? If you told them, 'Okay, this'll be all right,' what is the resolution?"
Well, so, I think there are two separate issues. Before I tell you what, before I separate the issues, I want to make it very clear what, what staff just said. Our traffic engineer accounted for immediate future development, like a Jersey Mike's, like a, like a Chick-fil-A. And Barton Le Judas said, "We concur with the consideration given to the increased traffic due to proposed development. Chick-fil-A, although not yet approved, is another development that could have been included in the background traffic. Increasing the background traffic or growth rate will better reflect expected levels of service, but this development's traffic will not have a large enough impact to change proposed mitigation recommendations." So, the first issue is how much impact our traffic will create. A new development, 88 apartment units creates X number of car trips, and our traffic engineer and the town's traffic engineer concluded that that will not significantly increase the, the trips, and it won't cause a problem, it won't further, it won't make worse the speeding problem. I believe the solution to the speeding problem, if there is one, and I don't know that to be true, but it's that, it's a town road that should get some speed bumps or something like that. There's mitigation measures that the town can take, but this proposed development isn't going to increase traffic problems. That's what two traffic engineers have concluded pretty, pretty clearly.
So, you touched on, and I was gonna say this earlier, but not only are the traffic studies going on, but we, this was a topic in our transportation committee meeting last night, and, and that's the input we get from the public, and just want the public to know and everyone to know that we're, this is an ongoing process. We specifically talked about walkability, we talked last night about the crosswalk, we're gonna do some work there, and this'll be an ongoing process. And we talked, I don't know if speed bumps are the answer there, but Bob will shake his head, the DP...
I'm a lawyer, not a traffic guy. Don't, don't take my word for that.
But I'm just saying that the, the town has their own committee that's always working on these things, as we did last night.
So, that we did receive that petition in August, late August, by David Roder.
Yes.
Yes.
And so that's what, again.
Yeah.
Asking if, if the communication with the residents and everybody is there, because we'll hear a feedback and I think, you know, Linda alluded to that. So again, I, I know at least the action item for tonight is for the public hearing, there's no decision by the board tonight, but just so that there's always like, you know, productive conversation so that you don't get too far along in the process and then you don't get your special use permit, right? I think we just kind of, at least for me, I just wanted to raise a little bit of preview of those concerns and you probably still have other questions, Linda, but I wanted to at least have some initial conversation and then some assurance before we go into the hearing that you're having these ongoing, some discussions-
Yeah. We had discussions and, you know, I don't think anybody wants an apartment building in their backyard. I think for them to be fully satisfied would be for us to find somewhere else to build an apartment building. But that's not the issue, that's not the question. The question is, have we had discussions, have we made our best efforts and have we made this palatable to them? And I think the answer to that is yes.
Okay. All right. So I guess we'll, we'll find out if the, so, all right, December 4th is the proposed hearing and then we'll hear from the feedback if there is or any new concerns or petitions raised at that point. So I think you're looking for a resolution tonight, right? So I'll go ahead and, and make a motion-
I don't need the resolution, I just need the approval to set the public hearing. I can just submit that. So we just, typically the town board memorializes that, that we're formally accepting the application and then setting the public hearing.
We don't need to do a formal resolution because then the resolution would be-
Too late, okay, all right.
So we all agree.
So do you need a vote that there's no objection to the hearing? Sue, what do you need?
Yeah, I guess what I was saying is we don't need to, we don't need to prepare a formal resolution, but you should still vote to have the public hearing on the 4th.
Okay. Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much. I think this is good dialogue and we look forward to continuing it on December 4th.
Does the board need to do anything for secret tonight yet?
No.
Okay.
They'll be handled at a future meeting.
It's an uncoordinated review, so they'll, they'll take care of that before they address, render a decision.
Yeah.
Thank you all very-
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. Night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Okay, we have-
Oh, I'm going to be up next to her, I'm so sorry.
Do you do, on the court, do you coordinate a review per local laws? Do you need to start secret coordinator review on that law you want to push through?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have an informational item.
Very quickly. Just so everybody is aware, the draft environmental protection overlay district regulations, modifications are currently under review by EEECC. We're hopeful that they'll be able to finalize comments and that we would be bringing another local law to your attention in the coming work session. And to be determined, I won't, I won't commit us to a date, but that's fair.
I will say the EEECC has been very busy, they've been working really hard.
Yes.
And, you know, they had to make the renewable energy systems the priority.
Absolutely.
And so that put the EPod issue aside a little bit. And, you know, they're taking this all very seriously.
And priorities are, are critical, no, understand.
And, I'm sorry, don't, don't get mad, but that, it reminds me, so we have a vacancy on that committee, right?
Yes.
So I, with the workload being so, a lot, maybe we need to get that on, on our-
Yeah, I think we had discussed since it, the, it ends the first that we were going to, to look, but we probably should at least get up notice.
Get the application.
Process now would be the time to keep that going.
Yes.
Because even with the expansion, I mean, they are still so busy. So that extra person would be very helpful.
Got it.
Yes. Cool.
Okay. All right, I think we're, we're almost done for this part, right? No, I don't see any old business or new business. So we can now adjourn for, adjourn the meeting, our next work session will be Wednesday, December 18th. And I'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:44.
And move into the-
And move right in, I was telling you, can just keep moving?
PC TV.
So, yes, yeah. So, so we'll start right up with our special town board legislative meeting. Good evening and welcome, November 20th, town board, Leds meeting. Thank you, everyone. I'll call this meeting in order. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Barry?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Leanhouse?
Here.
Here.
Ackenden?
Here.
Tecklisch?
Here.
All aye.
And we should do, do we do the pledge? Should we do the pledge again or not? Now, we're good, okay.
I don't think that's necessary.
All right. We have no communication or announcements.
Yeah, we can't beat the-
Yeah, so, yeah. Thank you.
You guys cannot undo, outdo the-
Yeah, no question. So next, yeah.
I have a motion to delete Resolution 24T-175 with it having been passed unanimously in September.
It was originally passed as Resolution 151.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, do we need a vote to remove, Sue, that item?
Yeah, are we, are we removing it or withdrawing it?
We are, I don't know what the difference is. We already did it, so we're withdrawing it.
It's deleting.
Deleting.
Deleting. It was a mistake.
Okay. Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move right in the resolutions.
Authorization to settle New Monroe Real Estate LLC tax accessory proceedings?
So moved.
Second.
For Resolutions 170 through 174, they are of the same nature, whereas the petitioner commenced proceedings against the assessor and the board of assessment for the town, challenging a certain assessment for a tax year. Negotiations have been had between that petitioner as well as the town attorney and the assessor. The attorney has reached negotiation, excuse me, reached an agreement with each of these petitioners. In considering all of the facts and circumstances, recommends that the town board finds the compromise and settlement to be fair and reasonable and for approval, so that each of these settlements would be approved for their individual tax years. For 20, excuse me, for, yes, 24T-170, it is for Monroe, New Monroe Real Estate LLC.
I would just note also that these were really negotiated a while ago and, and we were waiting for the school district to sign off on these settlements. We finally got that, which is why they're all seeming to come all at the same time. But, you know, we had negotiated these a while ago.
Thank you.
So are we going to vote just on 170 or all of them?
I think we should vote individually, right?
Yeah. Okay. Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
All aye. Authorization to settle Chase Manhattan Bank tax accessory proceedings?
Moved as written.
Second.
Vote, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Tecklisch?
Aye.
Did I miss somebody?
No.
Just rearrange it.
All aye. Sorry, I was still writing Ackenden. Okay. Authorization to settle Allison Park LLC tax accessory proceedings?
Moved as written.
Second.
Vote.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
All aye. Authorization to settle Penfield Skyline Apartments tax accessory proceedings?
Moved as written.
Second.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
All aye. Authorization to settle Penfield Place Properties LLC tax accessory proceedings?
Moved as written.
Second.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
All aye. 175 was deleted.
New truck for Bob?
Purchase of one 2025 Chevrolet Silverado 250 HD.
Moved as written. Second.
Can I just add that it's a new truck for Public Works and not Bob Ackenden? Can I just clarify for the record? This is for the town. Yes, you're pointing to Bob Moore for Public Works, not, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, it's really good.
Sorry, both Bobs.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
And that's it.
Okay, no any, no more old or new business? So I'd like to, in accordance with Chapter 105 of New York Public Officers' Law, I'd like to request we enter into executive session, discuss the proposed acquisition, sale or lease of real property and may I have a motion to do so, please?
So moved.
Second.
Vote, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
And what tags that?
Okay, thank you. Our next town board meeting will be December 4th. I'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:51.